This will call the Sanger City Council into regular session at seven o'clock PM on Monday, November 3rd, 2025. If you will, please rise for the invocation to be led by Councilman Chick, followed by the pledge to be led by Councilman Bill Ue.
If anybody has prayer with me, heaven Father, thank for your stay. Thank for this great city, state, country that would be with us as we try to continue to love you and love our neighbors. Be with those Dallas Cowboys who whip up on those Arizona Cardinals tonight. Thank you, Lord, amen.
If you'll turn and face the flag, you're going to be in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated. The first item, as usual, on our agenda is our citizens' input time. Anybody wishing to speak during the citizens' input time is welcome to do so. We generally limit it to about three minutes. We do like to get a citizens' input form from you as a matter of record. More than anything, that should not prohibit you from coming on up and stating your name and address for the record and sharing with us. You can fill out one of those forms later. I don't have any forms here, but is there anybody wishing to speak during citizens' input time at this time? Okay, seeing no one approaching the podium, we'll move on, council, to your consent agenda. The consent agenda has the minutes from October 20th meeting, and it has the ordinance, new ordinance for itinerant merchants, peddlers, and vendors. We spent some time during work session on this. As always, any item on the consent agenda, you're welcome to pull, and we can deal with it separately, or we can deal with both of these two items, the minutes and this itinerant merchants, peddlers, vendors ordinance, all at once. What's your pleasure on the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, purely for a motion, I'm glad we made one. We approve the consent agenda, both items as presented.
I've got a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I've got a motion by Councilman Bill Ue, seconded by Councilman Burris, to approve the consent agenda as presented. All in favor of the motion indicate by raising your hand? Okay, any opposed? Okay, passes unanimously. All right, this brings us to our public hearing items. There are generally speaking, there's companion action items with these, so I'll call each public hearing open and give staff a moment to visit with us, and then anybody wishing to speak on a public hearing items, welcome to do so at the appropriate time. So we'll start with item three, which is to conduct a public hearing on request for a future land use map amendment from medium residential to industrial light for approximately 5.624 acres of land described as A0792A J Morton Track 53B within the city of Sanger and generally located on Union Hill Road, approximately 1,075 feet west of the intersection of FM 455 and Union Hill. We'll call the public hearing open at 7:03 and let staff do a little introduction of item.
Yes, this amendment has come about because we have a land, the landowner for this piece of property, realized that this land is not zoned for the use he's been using it for, and so he wants to make sure that his use is compatible, and that way in the future, if he sells the business, it's guaranteed to have this compatible use with it. This land was annexed in and was never given a zoning other than the default zoning, which was ag. So in order to change this zoning, our future land use map calls out that area as medium residential. So we would have to change this particular lot to industrial light in our future land use map to even be able to consider the request for the zoning change. We did mail out notices. We did not receive anything in return.
Very good. So anybody here who'd like to speak during the public hearing on this particular item? Okay, seeing no one approaching the podium, we'll close the public hearing at 7:05. That'll bring up the second public hearing, item four, which is to conduct a public hearing on request for a zoning change from agriculture ag to light industrial for approximately 5.624 acres of land described as A0792A J Morton Track 53B within the city of Sanger and generally located on Union Hill Road, approximately 1,075 feet west of the intersection of FM 455 and Union Hill Road. We'll open this public hearing at 7:05 and let staff, it's the same item.
Yes, this is the companion item to the land use amendment. So again, this is just to zone his property so that the use he currently has there and has had there is legal and carries with the property.
Okay. As I mentioned in the work session, the process is, if it's at conflict with the land use, we have to do public hearings for land use and then do public hearings for zoning, so this item is the second stage of that public hearing process. Anybody wishing to speak on the zoning item related here during the public hearing? Seeing no one approaching the podium, we'll close the public hearing at 7:06. That brings us to item five, which is to conduct a public hearing on an amendment to ordinance number 082225 for approximately 130.907 acres of land described as A0029A RBB Track 67 and 68 PT and A0029 RBB Track 66 PT within the city of Sanger and generally located north of FM 455 and east of the Santa Fe Railroad. We'll call the public hearing open at 7:07. Let staff introduce it.
This is a planned development that you guys approved a couple of months ago, and in the motion that was made when the amendment was adopted, it said that the parks had to be developed prior to the 101st building permit being issued. The developer was under the impression that only the one main park, Park C, was held to that 101st permit. So he's coming back with an amendment to that that states that Park C will be completed prior to the 101st building permit being issued, and that Parks A and B will be developed with their respective phases. We did mail out notices for this one, too, 102. We received two responses and opposed. Those responses related more to the development in general, the density and the housing.
Okay, it's public hearing time. Do we have representative from the developer here?
We do.
If you'd like to speak, what?
I'm here to answer any questions.
Okay, and we can deal with that down in the action item if council has any questions, so we'll do that then. Anybody else wishing to speak during the public hearing portion on this 130.907 acres? Seeing no one interested in speaking, we'll close the public hearing at 7:08. That brings us to item six, which is to conduct a public hearing on request for a specific use permit, SUP, for professional tattoo studio described as A1241A Tier Western Track 101 and known as 103 South Stemmons Freeway, zoned as regional commercial RC, and generally located on the west side of Stemmons Freeway, approximately 436 feet south at the intersection of Bolivar Street and Stemmons Freeway. We'll open the public hearing at 7:09 and let staff do the introduction.
Yes, the applicant came to us requesting a SUP to put in a tattoo shop. This particular location was formerly RV sales, and I think that you'll remember, the whole lot was covered with RVs. RV sales are not allowed in this zoning district, so when they wanted to expand and move on, there was no room for them to go, so they moved out. And this tattoo studio has identified this building as a good location for them, and so they were requesting that they have an SUP for a tattoo shop at this location. We did mail out 12 notices and did not receive any in return.
Okay. No owners here, and would you like to speak during the public hearing?
Yes. My name is Andy Reed, not Kansas City Chief Andy Reed. I represent the two buildings to the south of this property. One is owned by the EDM Institute, which in that building offers career counseling to high school and college students, also provides services for women, and also provides scholarships for young people. It's also associated with Fellowship of Christian Athletes in that they hold meetings there from time to time as well. The other building has been in limbo because of working through the process with the state on the, what do you call it?
In that domain?
Right. But now that that's resolved, you know, we're going to go in and do a lot of development there, but I'm hesitant to do a lot of development there if this tattoo studio is going to go in. My understanding is that the state of Texas does not have a minimum distance from residence, churches, or schools, but that's left up to the local zoning laws, and my understanding is Sanger does not have anything with regards to that. Many local governments specify it cannot be within 1,000 feet of either school, a church, or residence, and this would violate all three of those if that was the requirement for the city of Sanger. And so I'm concerned about it from the standpoint, they just passed a law that anyone under the age of 18 cannot get a tattoo. Well, being that close to the school, you have a lot of young people around there, as well as with the gym and everything else like that, that that's going to be a temptation for young people to frequent that. I asked Remy, you know, what about hours? Is this going to be a 24-hour operation, or is the city council going to limit in the special use permit consideration, just like you were talking about the signage? You know, is there going to be a time that they open in the morning and close at night? Is it a seven-day-a-week, 24-hour-a-day situation? That would have negative impact on what we do for that to be the case, and I would encourage the city council, before they vote on the special use permit, consider a zoning requirement of the proximity to the school. So I told Remy, we had someone approach us a couple years ago about leasing space in our building, which is right next to this, and they had actually signed a lease and then came back and said, no, they've turned us down because we're too close to a school. I don't know who they were. My understanding was the state, but in research, I don't see anything in the state law. It mainly says they leave the zoning ordinances to the local entities to determine that. But I'm concerned about the youth and the visibility of what this would be on, who would it be attracting. I understand there is another tattoo studio in town. I don't know, is this a relocation or?
I'm not aware of another tattoo studio.
Okay, okay. So anyway, I'm here to speak in opposition
Station.
to this special use permit without some modifications to the zoning and consideration of its proximity to the church, the residence, and the school, which most and many local and county have that kind of a restriction. And I haven't looked into whether or not county has any restrictions on this or not, but, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you all might have. And Remy said that 12 notices were mailed out. We returned two in opposition of it, so I'm not sure why that never made it here.
Okay.
Thank you, USMF.
Well, we'll register it here. I was mistaken when I said owner earlier, so you're the adjacent owners to the south?
The two buildings.
To the south, okay, got it.
Right, and so we have a lot of women coming into that building, a lot of young people, and like I said, there's career counseling, other kinds of youth-related ministry that takes place there.
That's good enough, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to speak during the public hearing time? Okay, we'll close the public hearing then at 7:15. Okay, first action item is item seven, consideration of possible action on ordinance number 112925, a request for a future land use map amendment from medium residential to industrial light for approximately 5.624 acres of land described as A0792AJ Morton Track 553B within the city of Sanger and generally located on Union Hill Road, approximately 1,075 feet west of the intersection of FM 455 and Union Hill Road. We've seen staff's initial coverage of this and had the public hearing with no comments from anyone else. Counsel, do you have any further questions or deliberation you'd like to make on this item? There isn't any. What's your pleasure then on item seven?
We approve ordinance 11-29-25, a request for a future land use map amendment for medium residential to industrial, approximately 5.624 acres of land described as.
Okay, got a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
I've got a motion by Councilman Chick, seconded by Councilman Gann, approving ordinance number 112925, a request for future land use map amendment from medium residential to industrial light for approximately 5.624 acres of land as described in action item seven. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion indicate by raising your hand. Passes unanimously, thank you. Item eight, consideration of possible action, ordinance number 113025, a request for zoning from ag to light industrial for approximately 5.624 acres of land as further described in action item eight. Any additional discussion council would like to make on this, and if not, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion we approve as before, 1130-30-25, request for zoning change from agricultural to light industrial for approximately 5.624 acres of land described in item number eight.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Got a motion by Councilman Chick, seconded by Councilman Gann, to approve ordinance number 113025, a request for zoning change from ag to light industrial for approximately 5.624 acres of, 624 acres of land as described in action item eight. Any other discussion? All in favor indicate by raising your hand. Passes unanimously. That brings us to item nine, which is consideration of possible action on amendment to ordinance 082225, creating ordinance number 113125 for approximately 130.907 acres of land described as A0029A RBB Track 67 and 68 PT and A0029 RBB Track 66 PT within the city of Sanger and generally located north of FM 455 and east of the Santa Fe Railroad. And staff has introduced this one before. Any additional comments at all from staff?
No, other than this one change, it's exactly what you guys approved.
Okay.
And it doesn't change, we don't need to add that, you know, each park is done with each phase or?
It's in there. It's in there.
I just want, I think you said it, I think you just restated it, but just to clarify, you know, Councilman Bill Ue's question on it, a park will be completed with each phase
My name is Jerry Silo with JBI Partners, 2121 Midway Road in Carrollton. I do represent the developer on this request. Yes, sir. There is a park located in each phase of the development. When that phase develops, that park that is in that phase will develop in conjunction with that phase. With the specific, that Park C, which is the big one-acre one, has to be done irrespective of, if there is 150 lots in phase one, it still has to be done by the 101st lot.
Okay, I thought, I just wanted to double check.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussions on item nine?
No, Mr. Mayor, we'll go for the half-trick.
Okay.
Make a motion we approve the amendment to ordinance 08-22-25 and create ordinance 11-31-25 for approximately 130.907 acres of land described in action item number nine.
Okay, we've got a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I've got a motion by Councilman Chick, seconded by Councilman Burris, to approve amendment to ordinance 082225, creating ordinance number 113125 for approximately 130.907 acres of land as further described in action item nine. Any other discussion for anyone? If not, all in favor of the motion indicate by raising your hand. Passes unanimously. That brings us to action item 10, which is consideration and possible action ordinance number 113225, a request for a specific use permit, SUP, for personal tattoo studio described as A1241A Tier Western Track 101 and known as 103 South Stemmons Freeway, zoned as regional commercial RC, generally located on the west side of Stemmons Freeway, approximately 436 feet south of the intersection of Bolivar Street and South Stemmons Freeway. We visited briefly on this during the work session, and you've heard the, during the public hearing, the opposition that's been stated there with regard to its proximity to the school, church, and other younger and ministry-oriented work that's nearby, so we may want to discuss that further and either disallow, or if we are going to allow, be more restrictive about it. So I'd entertain some discussion from council.
I have a third question. Would anything that goes in there have to have the SUP?
No, no. The SUP is related to this particular use.
I mean, regional commercial would allow for a lot of things.
Regional commercial is our largest commercial zoning, so it allows for the most.
Yeah, it does, I mean, okay, it does, but it'll list some things, and the only way they get in there is with an SUP.
Correct.
This is one of them.
This is one of them.
Several of those in our ordinance is that you're only allowed to put certain things if council's willing to grant an SUP.
Correct.
So one of the big things about the SUP, it was discussed in the work session, is if you do that and you don't put any conditions on it, that SUP will run with the land. So that's why we've tried to put something on there. Time is the one thing that we could pick and assign to it and go, and this one has a one-year assignment. At the end of that one year, they will have to come back and reapply. Now, unlike some of the other ones, I don't see a lot of other restrictions in there, and I've tried to skim it to find, but usually if it changes, if somebody's coming with an SUP, it's not one of the general uses that we want or
Prefer.
prefer, or how we build it, and we're looking at the entire fabric of the city. And so it needs to kind of fit and transition. And when we do an SUP, that's something out of the ordinary, so we usually put a lot of restrictions on those, not only time, but usually ownership. If that changes ownership, then that SUP goes away, and then the new owner or the new business owner would have to come back and apply, even if they're doing the same type of business. We, I don't see any of those details that we've had in the past. And Mr. Reed, I hear what you're saying. One of our challenges is we have to go by the ordinances we have on the books. I think those are good recommendations. I wasn't aware of tattoo parlors having the same restrictions as SOB or alcohol sales, things like that, tobacco shops, where there are some distance from those things, and I'm not aware that we have those on the books. So with that being said, I'm hesitant to create something like that just because of the liability. Now, if staff can tell me that an SUP would allow us to set that, that's one thing. But if we don't have those type of restrictions on the book, that can be problematic for us creating those, unless there's a mechanism that allows us to do it. I hope that makes sense. And we couldn't, we couldn't talk like this during the public hearing. That's what I'm saving my comments from now. But I do believe that there needs to be some additional restrictions in there, primarily with signage. You know, I think every business deserves to advertise their business, but that I-35 corridor allows for really tall, tall signs. And I tell you, I would be in favor of restricting the signage to whatever the ordinance allows for the building in a monument sign. But when you start looking at the signs, and you see how tall the Dallas signs, Starbucks, and everything else in that corridor, they're right there. And we do have that ability, since it is an SUP, to put some more restrictions, and I would be in favor of restricting some of that signage. And I think you bring up a good point. I think hours of operation, have you had any of those?
No, they have not given me any of their hours of operation.
Okay. I know there is another tattoo shop in town over by Hunter's. If it was there...
It's not there anymore.
Okay.
I was going to say, there's not one that I'm aware of.
Well, if they were there, and what I'm getting at is, I don't know what their hours of operations are. And I think that's something that we should at least address and discuss. I don't know what we could do about that, and we need our staff to tell me if we're crossing any lines, but I think that's a great point.
I think because it's SUP, we can vote to not allow. If we decided, just say, it doesn't meet what we think the criteria are for SUP, we can do that. I don't think we want to deliberate that in great extent, but I think we've got the right.
No, I think instead of us trying to determine what the hours are and anything else, I would want more information on all of that stuff in order to do it, so.
Again, the SUP is a mechanism for these things. That's why they are, several uses are listed and are classified as SUPs
Right.
to give you the privilege to set some restrictions. Distance restrictions setting with an SUP wouldn't make sense, just deny it.
Correct.
So hours, you know, you certainly, I think that you should also consider some of the other. There clearly is a stigma with tattoo parlors, you know, some are good, some are bad, but the artwork parlors, and again, this is information, I'm not trying to sway opinions, but these are also places that do cosmetic, tattoos, eyebrows, things like that, you have cancer patients and things like that, those are tattoos. For years and years, they were classified as tattoos and not cosmetic. There was a lot of things that were done. The, because of the licensing of tattoo parlors and tattoo artists now through the state and through the health, they run a higher risk if they're not in compliance with following the laws related to age and other things. That's a business enter for them. Their license gets pulled by the state, they no longer have a source of income. A lot of the individuals I know in the business are very cognizant of that and very aware of the risks they run whenever they and very aware of the risk they run whenever they bypass the laws of the state. You always have some bad apples in any business, but those are also some considerations. There's some information I think you need to have because they're, again, tattoo parlors do carry a stigma that largely is related, I believe, largely related to tattoo parlors of the past and what they meant twenty years ago or thirty years ago. I think the profession has probably changed in a lot of ways, just like every profession has. So, I think some of those concerns you have may not, not to minimize them, but may not be as valid as they would have been, say, you'd seen this item twenty-three years ago. I think that that does, that stigma does carry over into where that property is located on I thirty-five. I believe that the sign restrictions and things like that, that make sure that the appearance of that building is as professional as you hope the operation is, are very important and critical to what the council is trying to do as far as quality life and culture and the future businesses along that corridor. Hours of operation, again, those are certainly things you can establish. I really, and Rainie, you can help with that. I don't know a whole lot of twenty-four hour tattoo parlors that operate in small communities anymore. I know a lot still operate like in Longmont and San Antonio's and, you know, military bases and things like that that have additional, additional things and are not just, you know, where they're surrounded by bars and things like that. But I think there is validity if you choose to set those hours, that you could absolutely do that. And I think you could do that within reason that would not impede really their ability to operate.
I have one other question. I'm asking.
I mean, I think that's okay. Go ahead.
Are they also proposing new body piercings that would bring in all kinds of medical restrictions?
Their letter of intent. Providing a clean, safe, and professional environment where clients can receive high-quality tattoo services. Our studio will operate in full compliance with all state and local health, safety, and zoning regulations. We will maintain all required licenses as mandated by the Texas Department of State Health Services. It doesn't specify that in their letter. They said they understand the importance of maintaining professional atmosphere and the shop will be designed to reflect that commitment. They will not permit any loitering, disruptive behavior, or activities inconsistent with the city of Sanger's standards for downtown businesses.
The other comment I would make is you need to be aware of where the exit rate is going to be when that modification to I thirty-five is done. It's going to pour off at our second building to the south. So, that means everybody going to the tattoo parlor will have to exit before four fifty-five and travel down the access road in order to gain access to that property.
Can that take? And counsel also, if you require more information of the SUP, it would also be appropriate to delay that and ask that the applicant be available to answer those questions in person.
That's my question, was going to be my question. Did they, did they come to the PNZ hearing, the applicant?
They did not.
And this came from planning and zoning. Do they have any recommendations, anything that they?
They did not. They passed. They recommended approval.
I think if we're going to go so far as to set hours, we might, should hear from, hear from the applicant and force them to come. And in that case, we might want to just take no action. Tableting would require it to come back immediately. So, depending on what council, how council wants to deal with it, if we think we want them to come back, we could instruct staff to do so. And we would, I think the appropriate action would be no action because then it can come back in whatever timeframe gets set. It doesn't have to come back every, if we table it, it has to be brought back up every time. Is that correct procedurally?
You could, yeah, I mean, you could pull it off the table at any time.
Right.
So, that's.
I think taking no action would let it come back to us at any point.
I don't think we need to waste time trying to set hours and their hours and then they come back and, you know, we give them a fair opportunity, but I wish they were here so I could tell them my concerns.
Right.
And so, I'd like for them to come back, tell them that. They may not agree and then it makes the decision pretty simple. But I think we owe them a fair shot with any business. And to at least tell them why we are or are not going to do it. But I don't think I have enough information. If I was forced to take a look right now, I would not be for this because I have no.
Is there any other sentiment that council would want to share?
So, we can ask them to come in.
We can, we can basically say that we didn't have enough information and invite them to come in.
I think they would be willing to do that.
Okay. Is there any, it's not like on a plat or anything where we have a shot clock or anything like that, right? It's, so there's no, no things like that, so.
Listen, SUPs, we need to do them right.
Yeah.
We need to do them right. I think it's fair to hold off and let them come and answer our questions. And let's hear it from them instead of speculating.
Does anybody else feel contrary or okay? Are you okay with that?
I'm very, I'm very.
Okay. You okay with that? Anybody want to speak against just taking no action at this time and to allow staff to inquire of the applicant and get them scheduled to be here if they feel strong enough to be here? Anybody want to speak another option?
What would be your difference from just denying it?
If you, that's, that's the option. If we want to vote to deny it, it would then have to go back through, if they want to try it again. Or is there, if we deny an SUP, is there a timeframe that they?
I believe there's a timeframe. They can't bring that back in.
I believe twelve lots without substantial change to the application.
So, it's, I'm okay either way. And that's the reason I kind of wanted to give you a chance to comment. So, it depends on how strongly council feels one way or the other. If it's not going to make a difference if they come and if you're opposed to it regardless where they come, then we ought to just not beat around the bush. If we think we might allow it with certain things, then we ought to no action and let them come back. If there's, it'd be interesting to look at other ordinances around to Mr. Reed's point. I mean, if there's, that's pretty standard fare out there in ordinances. It'd be interesting not to go, this might be something we would want to build into our own ordinance at some point.
Yeah. Because I know we've done that with other businesses.
Yeah.
And we're, listen, is, I'm.
Around.
We did review numerous ordinances over this last change that was just adopted.
Yeah.
And you came back with the SUP recommendation based on those other ordinances.
Okay.
I appreciate the flexibility, SUPs, Dan. I wouldn't want to back us into a corner for something in the future. I think the SUP is the right, right back.
And again, we just finished a substantial amount of research and work.
Yeah.
So, I'll just, I'll throw it out there. I'll make a motion that we deny ordinance twenty-one of eleven thirty-two twenty-five for the request of the SUP as stated in action item number ten.
Okay. I have a motion to deny ordinance eleven thirty-two twenty-five, a request for a specific use permit for the tattoo studio as outlined in ten. Do I hear a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Okay. I've got a motion by Councilman Chick, seconded by Councilman Gann to deny ordinance number eleven thirty-two twenty-five, a request for a specific use permit for a professional tattoo studio as further described in action item ten. Any additional discussion at this point? Any?
Yeah, I mean, Mr. Mayor, I believe the thirty-five frontage is front real estate, but I still think, I think the fair thing to do with any business, whether it's a business I prefer or not prefer, I'm inclined to let them come back and leave their base and make a decision. So, I, I just think that, that's just what I would do, so I just put on that out there.
Sure. Notice that this was coming up.
Yeah, they know what dates that they're going to be held on. We don't require them to be here, but.
Yeah, I'm not advocating for this business or against it. I'm more conservative. Giving a business owner a, that's all. That's all. And that's all, that's all I'm saying.
I think Councilman Chick's position was just that they, they knew that they had it in front of both PNZ and here. Yeah. So, anyway, but, but that's, you would think they were real interested they'd be here. If it's my business, I might be here. All right. Any other discussion or comments? Okay. All right. So, the vote will be, if you're in favor of the motion, it's a motion to deny, just to be clear, okay? So, all of those in favor of the motion to deny ordinance number eleven thirty-two twenty-five related to a specific use permit for a professional tattoo studio as described in item ten indicate by raising your hand. Okay. I've got two, all those opposed. Okay. Does not pass, the motion denied did not pass, so two to three. Okay. Is there any other action I don't, that somebody wants to motion? I'm presuming that's an indication of an interest based on what's been said to bring them back.
Yeah. And that's where I'm, if there's some guidance from you or staff, what is it to give them an opportunity? I know that it is just a bullet or?
It's no action.
No action.
No action. We'll just, we'll just call it done.
Okay.
We won't take any action. I don't think we want to table it because we don't want to, if they can't be here the next meeting. My understanding is parliamentary, if you table it, it's got to keep coming back, so.
So, how far out?
It'll be up to them whenever they can get it scheduled to bring them back.
I will contact them tomorrow and see when they would prefer to come back.
So, maybe the next one.
Could be the next one. It may be that first one in December. I would guess they will come back as soon as possible, would be my guess.
Okay.
Okay. So, if council's okay with that, if I don't hear anybody speaking up, we'll take no action on this item. Okay. Any future agenda item?
Can I ask one more question? I was talking earlier, Assistant Terry. We were supposed to give you dates for a workshop when you were there. Just, I'd sent out a notification last week. I've got a date. I'm checking availability on. And then if you're not available that day, if you could send me some April dates, the sooner I get those, the better.
March sixth is the requested initial date by the city manager, so look at your calendars for that. And if that doesn't work, propose some additional times.
Just vaguely, I thought there was a deliberative. I just couldn't remember what it was.
Yeah, as soon, as soon as possible.
Yeah.
It's my prayer.
Okay. Any, any other future agenda item anybody wants to mention? Okay. You've got informational items which we were able to ask some questions on, item eleven and twelve, financial reports and dispersments. Any other questions on those? Okay. Seeing no other action items, we'll call this meeting adjourned at seven forty-three.